But everything seemed, everything seemed to fall in line. So I was able to get internet access and everything's good. So here I am.
All right. Before I call the meeting to order, anybody who's in the chambers, remind you to please silence your cell phones. And for those who are on attending via Zoom, just a reminder to please keep your, your microphones muted so we don't get background noise from, from all the participants on Zoom. However, if you're going to speak at some point, like during public comment or something like that, you can unmute, state your name and address and speak. So, so just a reminder, everybody, just we're trying to keep the noise levels down, obviously. So, all right, we are at 6:01 and I am going to call to order the common counsel for the city of Glendale. Everybody, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Alderman Weezy will lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovich.
Here.
Alderman Dougherty.
Here.
Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Weezy.
Here.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Here.
Oh, a public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the mayor and council on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? I see somebody raising their hand here in the council chambers. If you would please approach the microphone there and tell us your name and address, please.
6933 Elm Tree Road.
Okay, I'll need you to move a little closer to the microphone. There's a little red light right here. When you're speaking, it should come on. If it doesn't come on, then people on the Zoom can't hear you. So why don't you introduce yourself again, please?
Steve Needham.
Perfect.
6933 North Elm Tree Road, Glendale.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for-
You've got two minutes. Go right ahead.
Two minutes. I'm loaded for bear. I can't get through in two minutes, but I'll do my best.
Okay.
Glendale is great. This is not a problem with Glendale. The Glendale Police Department is great. This is not a problem with them. I live on Elm Tree Road, which is a horseshoe street. It merges with Ironwood Lane. On Ironwood, on Ironwood Lane, a few years ago, and I don't know the exact date, I've got a lot of information, but 6801 North Ironwood Lane, it changed from a neighborhood house, a residential house. Everybody else is a family lives there. It is now a business. The business that operates is a care facility, a residential facility, a treatment facility. It's got a bunch of different names. One of the places may be owned by a place called Brown's Living. One may be owned by or supervised by Lakeland Care. I've done a lot of work on this and I'd be happy to share with it at a later date. What we're here for tonight is to let you know that the neighbors are very concerned. And I think the city council, again, thank you for letting me speak to you. I'll try not to rush through this, but basically you've got a business. This is a business. And in the past, or not in the past six months, but in a six-month period, you've had over 30 police reports, police incidents arising out of this location. Now, again, nobody's complaining about the Glendale Police Department. They are great. We feel safe in our neighborhood. But you shouldn't have a business using the Glendale Police Department as a private security force. What we have there is a group of people who are supposed to be giving care and custody control of individuals who have serious problems. This neighborhood has now been transformed into a neighborhood where people are afraid to walk the streets, not at night, during the daytime. They're aware of incidents where a person has knocked on the door close to midnight, demanding entrance, demanding money. Police arrived instantaneously. There's no problem. The individual was released because he's not competent to stand trial. We have a situation where the individual walked up to a house on his own, no caregiver with her, and said, this is my house. Let me into my house. It's not. I have contacted representatives or people affiliated with Brown's Living LLC. You can check the alphabet soup that I've had to go through. But basically, I talked to a COO. They also have a CFO and a CEO. And when I explained to them that the person that you are providing care and treatment for stole a vehicle, that person said, oh, no, it wasn't a neighbor's car. They stole our vehicle. Is that supposed to make me feel better that their security system allows for their inmates, not patients, their care? Residents' clients, thank you. Stole their own vehicle. This individual who took the vehicle, and again, the police can't do any, the police do everything, they can't do anything to charge this individual. And I don't know if the organization even would press charges against the individual, but he's been declared incompetent. He's driving a vehicle on the city streets of Glendale. When I pointed that out, they said, oh, it's our vehicle. What did they do to correct that? I don't know, because a couple of weeks ago, month ago, sorry about the timeline, he did it again. They have not corrected the problem. He stood outside one neighbor's house, pounding on the door to come in, when the person who is in charge of supervising that area was contacted by me and I said, I don't know what your position is, but we've got a situation where a person who we view as dangerous is not being supervised or cared for, is walking the streets. The response I got, and this is from Lakeland Care, and I don't know if she's a supervisor, district organizer, she's something, she's something. And she told me, well, my advice would be to lock your doors and call the police. In other words, her advice was not that they were going to do something about this. And in another instance, when a worker who worked there, who worked there complained that she was afraid of physical violence there, she was transferred. When I again contacted Brown's Living to say, do you know this happened? The response was, well, people are transferred often. What that means is that if you complain about somebody at this location, they don't fix the problem, they transfer the person. That doesn't help the person. Again, the neighbors are not talking about the person. They're talking about the operation of this facility. I know you've got much more important things to do than to listen to me. But here's the situation. And when I say 30 police reports over a six-month period, there's been more. Now, I'm not here to complain. I have contacted the police department to give them a heads up about what we're doing. I've contacted my alderman. He's probably sick of hearing me. I've contacted Nicolay High School, which is across the street, 100 yards, 100 feet from this location. I've contacted people I can talk to. I've spoken to the neighbors. The neighbors, not all of them, some of them are afraid. I've got a lot of stuff here. And most of the times, the neighbors are identified by numbers or numerals because they don't want to come forth because they are afraid. This is Glendale. And I'm not expecting you to wave a magic wand. I will do any legwork or any work that needs to be done to address this. If you've got better ideas than I do, which I hope you do, but if you've got better ideas than I do, that's great. If you've got a residence being operated as a business that has over 30 police reports in a six-month period, if that's not a public nuisance, you don't have a public nuisance law in Glendale. And if you don't enforce a public nuisance against this location, I don't know how you'll ever enforce it against any other location. Maybe that's not the best way to go. If you want me to work with the Plan Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, if there's a way to work this, but we have got a problem. Again, not to beat this dead horse, but one of, one of the people I spoke to from Brown's Living, when I told that there was a person who, being advised, do not go to this neighbor's house, decided he wouldn't go to the house, he would stand in the street and stare at the window for a long time. When I talked about this with the Brown's Living people, they told me, oh, they talked to this individual, they told them that was wrong and that resolved it. I can't say the next day, I can't say the next week, but within a month, he was back there doing the same thing, only this time, he was hiding in the bushes. When you contact somebody who's running a home and they tell you, if you see a person that we're taking care of, walking your streets without one of our caretakers, the recommended activity is to contact the police. They didn't tell me to do, contact them. They said, contact the police. The police department for Glendale should not be the private security force for this residence. Again, I got lots of stuff, but I feel I'm losing my audience. So I'm going to wind this up. If anybody's got any questions for me, that's great. If anybody thinks there's nothing can be done, please let me know now. I think something can be done. I don't know what. But if I'm here to speak to deaf ears, and I understand that you don't know me, you never heard of me, maybe you don't like me, but if you're not going to do anything, let me know. If you want to talk to me in depth, if you want to get information from the neighbors in depth, I can be a conduit. There are other people who are willing to come here and talk. The people from Brown's Living in Lakeland, you'll be happy to talk to them. They will talk to you in, I'm not going to say gibberish, but they'll talk to you in institutional terms about how people that they take care of need a place to live. And we're not a snooty community that can't let them live in our neighborhood. And we're not. We're talking about protecting the peace and security of Glendale. How's that?
Thank you.
So we have had a number of other group home comments that have come up in the past. And, and they, we've actually had just discussions, group home issues in other neighborhoods. And there are federal protections. The state actually regulates those homes. The city has no ability to regulate those homes. However, I'm going to actually ask the city attorney because he has explained to us in the past what we can do and what we can't do. So I'm going to call on the city attorney right now who's on our Zoom. So John, go right ahead.
Your summary is correct, Mayor. The problem here is that the state is the regulatory agency, not us. And the combination of federal housing laws and state laws trump our zoning laws and trump our home business occupation laws. Second, as this gentleman has already pointed out, the municipal court is not an available source of remedy. The problem is that complaints to the state generally don't meet with much follow-up. And I think the owners of these type of facilities are aware of that. They're not particularly in fear that the state is going to lose their, or take their license, or really do much of anything, which is very frustrating from the local level. What could be done here, and Alderman Galhard has suggested, turn it up with the state. There's no bright line where you cross it, and it's so extreme that you file a lawsuit referring to it as a public nuisance. But actually, this gentleman is correct. Since we can't do it through our own laws, you would do it through the state public nuisance statute, literally file a lawsuit in the circuit court. It's something I've only done with this type of home once. It was relatively recently. And it kind of turned out to be a straw that broke the camel's back and the home closed. It was in a different community. So I know that Alderman Galhard has a lot of information. I know that the chief has a lot of information. And let me look through the file. You've got me for one more agenda after this one. And while I feel kind of badly filing a circuit court action and then just passing it on to somebody, this gentleman is not exaggerating. This, this home is a problem. And the ownership doesn't seem to be exaggerating. So what I would just suggest to this gentleman is that it needs to, I need to take a very close look at it. And if I, if I think that there's a sustainable circuit court action there, and I think that the state is going to do nothing, which is pretty much what I think, then maybe that's something I would have to ask the council for authorization to do. I would not just follow, file that lawsuit on my own. I would bounce that off to common counsel. So sir, don't assume you haven't been heard. It is worth looking at. I can assure you that Alderman Galhard has sent me plenty of information on this. And we go from there.
Thank you, Attorney Fuchs. Rachel, can we put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. We will have it on the agenda for the next meeting. That will give the, the city attorney a couple of weeks to prepare his summary to us as to what this would take to go into circuit court. That, that is, this, this has come up in the past in other neighborhoods. And, you know, it has been, you know, where, where aldermen have made phone calls, the mayor's made phone calls. I know Alderman Weezy's had several in his neighborhood. And in, we run up against that wall of the state regulates them and the feds say there's nothing the cities are allowed to do about it. And so we fight with the state and don't really get anywhere. But as you've heard from the city attorney, he has done one of these in another municipality and, and met with at least some success in that they just shut the house down. So whatever it takes. And so yes, we will put on the agenda for our next meeting. We can't make a motion today because it isn't on the agenda, but we can certainly take it up at our next meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard. Do you want to see me again? Or would you prefer not to see me again? I could take it either way.
Make sure your alderman has everything because he's been giving everything to the city attorney. So if your alderman has everything done, did you want to say anything more?
I did. I just wanted to let some of the constituents know here that I did directly contact the Brown's Living, probably about three weeks ago, about this particular issue as a result of a complaint from Stephen Sellers, who lives behind this particular group home. I confess, I didn't get a whole lot of traction with the Brown's Living folks. I did circulate the website link for making a complaint to the Department of Health Services. They do have an agency within the agency that, that does field complaints about community-based residential facilities, which is what this is. And I encouraged some of the residents to go ahead and make a complaint to the state to kind of get the ball rolling here so that they're on notice. There's a problem here that this, this person is acting out in such a way that he's not being provided the correct level of care, I think, is how the state would look at it. And that might affect their licensure. So I hope that some of the residents took me up on my suggestion to file those complaints so we could at least get this, get this started.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate everything. Appreciate the time. Appreciate the lawyer's advice. I'm going to leave tonight, but I'm not going away. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Okay, Ginny. The same, same thing I said to him when you're speaking, if a little red light lights up, then they can all hear you. If not, keep, move closer.
Hi, Virginia Gores, 6861 North Ironwood Lane. For what it's worth, the city of Glendale actually does have a chronic nuisance premise law, 1166. So that's three visits by the police, thank you very much, in 180 days. This is two months, maybe three months. And there are at least 23 that I've counted. I have noticed that things don't get, they kind of get routed through the Guardian. And the Guardian seems to have a lot of sway with this. And if the Guardian says, no, don't put him in the mental health facility, he gets put back. And I have made up two pages of a list, police called, police found, returned to home. We're getting tired of. We are literally prisoners in our homes during the day. At night, we're not worried about it because unless he's been drinking, he doesn't go out. But he does get loose. I think it was August, in September, the people watching him, who I'm just going to call babysitters at this point, have kind of done the whole, if you're really good, we'll let you do this. So for most of August, part of September and part of October, he was off on his own. He wasn't with, they, they were not with him, but he never ran. We very seldom saw the police come. They did come, but it wasn't as numerous times as in the past. He moved in on June, June 10th. The first time the police showed up was June 13th because he wandered away. This is what he does. We're getting tired of it. And as I say, you do have a nuisance law. And there's no reason in the world why you cannot start issuing tickets to Brown's Living. Because as Steve said, the only way to get these people is through the wallet. He's not going to therapy that we can see. Every two or three months, there's a big confab, you get 10 cars down there, but nothing changes. The one person who suggested after the first auto theft, that he was not coming back, she no longer works for them. So that's the second, well, first, but Keisha was the second. They transfer them out. They don't want problems. They just want the money. And if you get him in the wallet, and I think that's the route we're going to end up taking, they're just going to close it down. The house is falling apart. I was in it the other day. I was talking, when Damien wasn't, nobody was there. I got nosy and the maintenance guy was there. The place is falling apart. So that's another way. I warned him about Jay's back windows. And he said, oh, yeah, I know about it. I can push the entire frame out. So that might be another way of going. That's it. Thanks. You need to do something and do it soon.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right. Before we move on then with the rest of our agenda, I would just like to let everybody know, I did reach out to Mayor Sean Riley. I extended condolences on behalf of the city of Glendale. And before we move on with the rest of our agenda, I'd like to just have us take a moment of silence for the five lives that were lost and the 40-plus people who were injured yesterday. All right, we'll move on then with the consent agenda. We had six items on the consent agenda for this evening. Adoption of minutes from our last meeting, approval of monthly reports, appointments to the Fourth of July Committee, as well as three payments for work that was conducted this year. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Moved.
Move Alderman Galhard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Dougherty. Any discussion? Without objection, the consent agenda is approved. Unfinished business. Item 4A, an update from the city attorney on 7113 North Navajo.
Mr. Fuchs. This does not have to be particularly long. The pre-trial that was scheduled a couple of weeks ago was put over by the court on its own motion to December 9. As a memo I wrote, you indicated, it turns out that the property was re-conveyed, Olga Chinagrits, actually, the, who we listed as the owner in our records. Our records were later changed shortly after I filed the lawsuit, appears to be the controlling owner of Advanced Builders. But most importantly, there is a mortgage on that property, which makes the lender a party in interest in this lawsuit. The lender has started a foreclosure. What I'm working on is consolidating the actions so that whatever court orders we get apply to all parties in interest because the court is not going to issue an order without that order giving all persons or entities that have an ownership interest and a mortgage is a form of interest in property, an opportunity to be heard. So it's, it's not actually breaking any land speed records going through the court system. But we're aware of all that in terms of the litigation. I should have all parties in the same proceeding, which I don't right now, but I should have that before the month of December is over. And then the litigation will again proceed. That's really the only development that came up since we last spoke.
Any comments or questions, members of the council? Alderman Galhard?
Yes, Attorney Fuchs, is the original owner that was originally served, is that person still in the action or not?
Still is in the action. I'm not going to eliminate any parties, particularly since that person seems to own the entity to which she retitled it. But I do, I am going to put both that entity and the lender all as parties to this lawsuit. And one of the things your question triggers, Alderman Galhard, is oddly, and you're familiar with this, one of the allegations in the lawsuit, very routine, is so-and-so is the owner of the property at such and such address. And when that lawsuits get served, the person whom you served has to answer that complaint. And the person, oddly enough, through her attorney, met that allegation with an admission. So I said, you're the owner of the property. And through her attorney, she said, yes, I am. No, she's not. So that, that's very odd, but it does cause the thing to not proceed as quickly as everybody on this council would like to see it proceed.
All right. Any other questions? Up again for the update from the city attorney on the Estebro Corporate Park Owners Association.
This, this one also can be somewhat brief. When Rachel was speaking to you, I believe it was the very last meeting, might have been the one before that, that the association is somewhat obsolete and in some ways, a great inconvenience, you know, getting the members of the association, including us, when we don't even own any property over there anymore, to do what was initially contemplated when we were an owner in terms of looking at each other's plans, seems a little bit obsolete. And the question was raised, what about the fact that that area is, is deed restricted against tax-exempt use? And I said, the deed restriction would survive the dissolution of the homeowners' association. That answer is actually correct, except when that association was formed in 1990, the attorney that did it, and I had been at the city attorney for about two and a half years, but I was not doing the development work yet. The attorney that did it implemented the prohibition against tax-exempt use by making it a provision of the homeowners' association. So the short version is, yeah, it's true, a deed restriction would survive if the homeowners' association were dissolved, but that prohibition is not part in place due to a deed restriction. It's part of the homeowners' association agreement. Bottom line, that prohibition against tax-exempt use has kept that whole area part of the city's tax base. It is, in my opinion, and I suspect unequivocally, all of you would share it, very much in the city's interest to leave it that way. Leave the prohibition against tax-exempt use. So don't dissolve the homeowners' association. That's my recommendation. Just, it's inconvenient. We sometimes have to notify each other, but that is a very, very minor inconvenience compared to risking that the ownership in the area would not agree to place a deed restriction there that isn't there. So leave it in place.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the... All right. Moving on then to item 4C, discussion on potential referendum for a possible Glendale library. Ms. Astrum.
Yes, this is a continuation of the past couple of meetings, and we've been giving additional information. One of the questions the council had at the last meeting was how does the tax levy play out and a tax rate play out if we were to have our own library for operating and then an additional 20 years for debt service? The debt service annual amount is based on a $10 million borrowing at 5%. We do know that interest rates are going up. We are taking a guess at 5% if we were to do a borrowing late next year. So if that would be the payments for over 20 years, about $797,000. The general operating goes from 486 to a little over 1 million. Taking your assessed tax rate per thousand from 27 cents to about a dollar two. And on a $250,000 house for operating, it would be about a $75 increase. And for debt service would be 110. Again, that was developed because we had talked about doing two separate referendums, one for the operating, one for the debt service. Combining them is, does not work per statute. You have to identify if it's only going to be so many years. So the debt would be for 20 years, but the operating would be intended to be indefinite.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the council? Alderman Galhard.
So are we anticipating setting up the referendum question with those numbers in place?
Well, that's what I wanted to bring to you. That I used a guess at $10 million. We don't know how much a building would cost, how much renovation would be, or to furnish it with the interior needing books, media, computers, furniture. So they're completely estimations based on information of other renovations. And then just an idea of what an initial collection could cost. We had talked about a not-to-exceed number on the debt. You could go lower and then not exceed it, but then work within those parameters. But with the way building materials are going and construction costs, it's anyone's guess on a weekly basis as to what the cost would be. It could go down. Costs could go down, but it's not likely. But we could get the supply chain back in order before we started- But we could get the supply chain back in order before we started construction and then not expend as much. However, I can't guarantee that either.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council?
One question here.
So Alderwoman Vukovich and Alderman Schmelsing.
So with the ten million, you are taking, you set a guestimate and you are looking at the prices as of right now, plus a little bump for possible future.
So I don't have prices right now because I don't know how much a piece of property would cost.
I get that part.
Are you thinking interest? We did put a bump on interest.
What I'm talking about is what you're estimating possibly a land would cost, but you don't know because we don't know what the building is. So you're just trying to guesstimate the best as you possibly can with looking, and I really want to understand this. We're looking around with other renovations and different things, putting all that together. It may be fifteen million, it may be twenty million. Right now, you're guessing at ten, or it might be even five.
I don't, yeah, five, I think is a low number just because it was about, it was a little more than five just for City Hall, not the expansion with the police garage and whatnot. We were looking at just about five for this.
Okay, do you feel ten is low though?
No, I think it, I think it's a good guess based on the information we've received from what Oak Creek was a recent renovation. I think McFliss also gave me Whitefish Bay. And then the guess on the product and what we put in, that's, that's a literal guess. That was just a million dollar guess.
Thank you. Alderman Schmelsing.
Thank you for collecting all these details. It's really helpful. Yeah, I think round numbers is the best we can go with right now is what I'm gathering as well. So if ten seems like the most round number, and I know when we just did some bonding for capital, it was at four percent as if we went out past twenty years. So seems like five percent again is conservative. So I think that all seems to be reasonable. But again, just to clarify, so we have to put it on for the operating, the referendum, but we don't have to put it on for the capital, but it does still add to our tax base, correct? It's not like this would be just absorbed by other city costs. It would be an actual increase in taxes regardless, correct?
Correct. We can increase tax levy with an increase in debt service. And then when that debt service falls off, the tax levy amount necessary to pay that debt service also falls off. However, it seemed to be a consensus of the council at the last meeting that they wanted to be completely transparent on the referendum and both before. So I just want to make sure that that's still what I'm working toward.
Right, yes, I, I'm under that assumption. I just wanted to clarify that. It would be for essentially the next twenty years, there would be higher taxes because of the bonding terms.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I, and then really it's, it's just comes down to that, I guess, picking the numbers because everything else is rather statutory specified in the, and how that would go on the referendum, correct?
Correct. The verbiage, as I had included in the packet from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, there would be a resolution. And then also the referendum question indicating the percentage and for how long.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. We'll move on then to new business and we are back to the city attorney. This is an update from the city attorney and possible action regarding a lawsuit, Robert Cromwell versus the City of Glendale. Mr. Fuchs.
Yes, I'm not looking for the council to discuss this and particularly with the plaintiff, since once you're in litigation, the communications go through the attorney. The case is very simple. There was a liquor license application filed by Nicholas Marking from Primetime Events. And Mr. Cromwell asked for a copy of that application and the materials that go with it. There's a state statute that says you can ask for a copy of the application. What we did, however, at the staff level is we redacted his personal phone and date of birth in multiple places. And we do that for a couple of reasons. One, the issue in the case is going to be, does that statute saying the application is public record, subject to open records request, does that mean it is entirely in that you lose all right to redact, or can you still redact personally identifying information? And so what I did is I reached out when the case was filed to the plaintiff's attorney. And I made some suggestions to him that I would call Mr. Marking and see if he cared one way or another. And had asked him what the view of the plaintiff might be. I had assumed that I would hear back from him by the time of this meeting, which is why I asked it to be on the agenda. I have not. I have talked to Nicholas Marking. And his view is, quote, give it to him if you have to, to keep him from costing the taxpayers too much. In other words, Mr. Marking is okay with doing it. Now, you would think that would probably resolve the case, but it doesn't in two respects. And this I would like to hear just a viewpoint on the philosophy behind this. The danger of these cases is that there are what are referred to as fee switching. If the claimant, the complainant is successful, even only in part, but it's a significant part, a substantial part, we pay that person's attorney's fees. If we're successful and we were correct to have redacted that information, the claimant does not pay our fees. So the risk is only a one-way street. It's not a two-way street of one person paying the other person's fees. The other is staff for a long time tries to avoid in open records requests, giving out personal identifying information for a couple of reasons. One, give me a name and a personal phone number and address, and I don't want to get into the whole voter fraud dilemma. You can very easily vote absentee. I'm not suggesting Mr. Cromwell would do that. I'm suggesting that we have a policy saying there are reasons we don't give out this information. Second, it avoids problems. It protects the privacy of the person who is the subject of the request, but it also protects the requestor. Here and there, we've had cases where we gave out information and the person was not only angry with us, but extraordinarily angry with the requestor. So number one, because I haven't heard back from the attorney, I don't know if the case can be resolved by taking up Mr. Marking on his comment that if it really gets rid of the case, feel free to do it. We probably still owe some attorney's fees if we settled. Alternately, do we want to keep the policy as it is? And wait for a circuit court to rule on whether we were correct to redact this or not redact this? Because that's been a policy. We stuck with it. But we would be making an exception here because one person complained, one person filed the lawsuit. So all I would like to know, without getting into the merits too extremely, is should I continue talking or trying to talk to Mr. Kamenek, even though I haven't heard back from him? Or should we just brief this thing out and see if a circuit court says we were right or wrong to redact that date of birth and personal phone number?
The first question I have is, are there any other circuit court rulings where municipalities have a policy of redacting some information like this? And the court has found either upheld those policies or has struck down those policies?
There are a substantial amount of ruling, Circuit Court, appellate court, Supreme Court and federal court. For example, if we have information that we obtained, and the only reason we had his date of birth was we took it off of his driver's license. Then a federal law called the Driver's Privacy Protection Act prohibits giving out that date of birth just because of where we got it. In an extreme case, but at least one I'm sure you may recall, personal information was given out regarding a complainant in the paper area, Brown County, wherever it's referred to as Monfields. And his coworkers dumped him in a paper vat and murdered him. So I mean, there's, there's litigation all over the place on it. There is very little as, and I don't mean to demean the importance of a lawsuit. I don't know of a case where it says picky or minor as just the date of birth and phone number. But as I said, depending on your level of cleverness, couple my date of birth with my name and my personal phone number and you can make some hay with it. I'll just leave it at that. It is, by my own admission and description, a very minor redaction. And I can't cite you to a case, mayor, where the redaction has been that simplistic, that simple, because there is a business phone number in the pleading. So if somebody wanted to reach Mr. Marking, they could do that. But keep in mind, by law, we don't get to ask the requestor, why do you want this guy's date of birth? We're prohibited from doing that. So I wish I could say which way I thought this case was going to go, but I can't.
So I guess, thank you. I appreciate that. My, my personal feeling on this is we have a policy that is in place. We, we have systemic problems in our country with, with identity theft. And while we don't have significant voter fraud problems, it's largely because we have policies like this where we protect people's personal information at the city level to prevent things like that. So my personal opinion is that I think we have a solid policy. We give out more than enough information. That information, all the information is still available to the police and to the city clerk. And so I would, at this point, would say that my, my personal feeling is that we should not settle this, but you know, I would like to see our policy upheld by a court because I believe that we're giving out so much information and only redacting the things that would protect someone from identity theft or voter fraud that, that I'd actually like to hear the court's opinion.
Then I would just ask if there's members of the council that feel differently. Because it's, it's not a case that requires a trial. It's a case where everybody knows the facts, everybody knows the issues, and it'll just get briefed out. And the court will decide it on those briefs.
I'm seeing two hands up right now, three hands up because I'm now looking at the screen. So I'm going to start with Alderwoman Vukovich, then Alderman Gelhard, and then Alderman Schmelsing.
When I was reading this, I was thinking, huh? Literally because as elected officials, our information is out there. We choose to have it out there because we are public figures. We go in there knowing that. This gentleman is a private sector person. He has to do stuff for his job. And I'm not even talking about voter fraud or anything like that. He is actually a private sector person. And to do his job, he has to put his name on some stuff, which is his name, and any contact information so we can contact him. I find it weird that we need to have his home address or his phone. Because previously, I think I've had people, what do you call it, stalk me and I've had to call the chief on it. And my name, number is public. I don't see any reason why we should have to put this out. The clerk has his information, am I correct? The police have his information if something happens, correct? The private business has his number and name if it's correct, correct? Am I correct in all these?
Correct.
All right, so what I don't see, I, I agree with the mayor. There is absolutely no reason why, if we have this person's name on there, there's no reason why we should give it out. And it's not even just the voter fraud, voter fraud part of it. It's because we need to protect our people too. I don't see the clerk's address and name out there publicly. I don't see, you know, Rachel's name and dress and phone number, her private number out there. And these are people who actually work for the city. So I just feel like if we can protect these people as much as possible, that is what we need to do. It doesn't affect the job of being an agent. It doesn't affect, you know, how we get a hold of them if something happens. And it's, in my, in my opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, so please, but the reason for open records is to stop government malfeasance. You know, make sure that we don't do something wrong, to do some checks and balances. This information does not stop any checks and balances or help any checks and balances whatsoever. So that is my strong opinion.
Thank you. Alderman Gelhard.
Attorney Fuchs, question for you. Is Mr. Cromwell represented by counsel in this action?
Yes.
That was the person that hasn't responded yet to Mr. Fuchs.
That's, that's a gentleman I referred to that I had a conversation with about possibilities of approaches to resolve it.
Okay.
But that was just first, you know, a typical conversation, just to feel each other out. It didn't really come to anything, John.
All right.
Alderman Schmelsing.
Thank you. Couple thoughts. Is it, in this specific scenario with the liquor license, is it required by any statute or anything on the state level to collect the date of birth and the personal address? Or is a business address and other contact information sufficient?
The date of birth is definitely necessary because by law, when somebody applies for a liquor license, it is sent to the police department. The police department does a background check. If it turns out the person has, and your date of birth is critical to researching your criminal background, if you have one. And if the person has a criminal background that might affect their performance in managing a place or being the agent on a place that serves alcohol, then the police report that to you, probably with a recommendation that you don't grant a license. So yes, we, we will always ask for that date of birth and we will always give it to the police department. The question is, do we have to give it to members of the public?
Got it. Okay. So, yeah, it really does. This is interesting because from a balancing perspective, you know, if the public wanted to check out the same individual for the same purposes, they couldn't. But at the same time, the public also shouldn't be, you know, going out and doing lines of credit on their behalf either. So I, I think it's, it's, I, I think we should see how, I'd take this to see if our policy stands up. I think it's something where it very likely is more in the benefit of the individual not to have the risk of fraud. We redact social security and date of birth and all sorts of numbers for all sorts of other reasons. So that was my main question is just what's the, the need of it? Because if it was excessive information we're collecting, then, you know, maybe that would have solved the problem, but it sounds like it's necessary. So, thank you.
All right, so we've heard from three members of the council, plus the mayor. The other three members of the council have indicated that they don't have an opinion on it or the other. So I mean, I guess, unless anybody objects, I think the city attorney is sort of has his directions here. Actually, I do see Alderman Gelhard raising.
Just one other thing, the way that Attorney Fuchs has framed this, it's essentially, it's a legal matter. It's not going to be a trial. So I don't think that we risk that much if we lose in terms of if we had to pay attorney's fees on the other end. It's just a matter of, you know, how much did it cost to prepare the complaint and perhaps do the brief? So I don't really think that we're going to face that, you know, that much exposure if we go forward with this.
Alderman Doherty.
I think we might as well find out if our rules stand up. I mean, there's no other way around this. There's always a balancing act between what's, you know, public and what's private information. And I think let's find out. I think at some point, it's asking a lot of people to have to put all their data out. And it's always available to everybody. So let's find out if we can try to get some balance to that.
I, I think.
Sounds like we've got a consensus here. Yeah. So go ahead. Attorney Fuchs.
I was just saying, I feel like I've, I've been adequately advised as to the view of the governance of the city.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item five B, review and possible action regarding the WRAP, W R A P restraint system grants.
Yes, before you is a request to accept a grant for eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-two cents to purchase six WRAP restraint systems. This would not go through the general fund. It will not affect our expenditure restraint program. I will let Chief Ferguson explain what the WRAP. I will let uh, Chief Ferguson explain what the wrap system is.
This is cool. Yeah, this, this thing is cool. I know what he's going to explain to us. So yeah.
Yeah, the wrap system, it, it's kind of unique. It is, it is um, a, a thing that when it is, it's meant for people that are either in crisis, are very combative. And it allows us to basically wrap them up. They do get handcuffed. We're able to have them wrapped up into a, a sitting position. It avoids uh, positional asphyxia. It uh, calms them down. It's able to us to transport them to either a medical facility or if we have to take them back to jail for one reason or another, uh, in a safe manner. Um, we've found them to be very useful. Uh, the unique thing about this is we've used it about ten times since we bought them. And uh, as the minute you put it on somebody, um, they completely calm down and it's been, it's been really good. Uh, it, it solves, it keeps us from having to use any extra force to get them from one place to another. It's unique. Um, the Charles Kubli Foundation, which deals with uh, uh, people with depression saw that. They heard that we had them. They reached out to us and asked if we would like to put in a grant to get more of these. And we did. So that's what we're coming for to ask for your permission.
Hey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Alderman Wheezy to approve is our second.
Second.
Second, Alderwoman Shaw. Any discussion?
I, I would like to say it reminds me of a weighted blanket type deal for kids.
Okay, we're getting the wrong one. It is, uh, I look at it as it's, we're giving you a nice big hug and it's a friendly hug. But once you do that, it calms people down. It's really takes the fight out of people and mainly for people in crisis, it really seems to calm them down. And we're able to do, take care of them um, without causing any injury. And quite frankly, the fire department and the hospitals like it because they're able to administer whatever care they need to without having to worry about someone uh, flailing around or, or causing trouble. So it's kind of a win-win for everybody.
Alright, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor approving, please say aye.
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 Oced. Motion carries. Next, item five C, review and possible action on Mount Royal subdivision landscape options.
So uh, a few months ago, there was a public information meeting for Mount Royal subdivision. Uh, the subdivision is in Alderman uh, Gelhard's district. At that public uh, meeting, there were some residents a little upset that uh, they weren't going to be receiving any type of sound wall or barrier um, between the newly constructed I forty-three Port Washington Road area and that there could cause uh, some disruption in their daily life that they're not necessarily used to. Uh, asked the city engineer to uh, review some options, working with I forty-three uh, W Wisconsin DOT staff and what uh, could be done in that area. Uh, Dr. Mayor is here uh, to discuss any questions you may have. Uh, but overall indicating that fencing uh, for eight properties as well as some shrubbery, tall shrubbery uh, would assist with uh, some of the challenges that they may see in the future. As this project is slated to be constructed twenty-two, twenty-three, we would find it uh, advisable that this would be an expense for twenty-twenty-four. And so my ultimate ask for the council is to uh, direct staff to include this in the next five-year capital improvement program. So we're planning for it and able to uh, assist these properties uh, moving forward. Uh, Dr. Mayor, did I catch it all?
So uh, any questions from anybody in the council? We have a motion then to direct staff to include this in the capital improvements budget.
I'm moved.
Move Alderman Gelhard is our second.
Second.
Second, Valdman Wheezy. Any discussion?
Um, if I could.
Wheezy, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the option between the fence and the trees, I don't think there's much of a choice because for ten thousand more, you got a, you know, fifteen, twenty-foot barrier that's going to be a little more solid than a six-foot fence. To me, six-foot fence isn't going to give you a lot of sound, you know, prevention.
It's not going to give a lot of sound prevention. Um, it's going to give a little more aesthetics uh, and hopefully some shading of light, uh, hopefully. Um, uh, other than that, uh, it's something to help uh, separate them from the traffic flow.
I, I think just one of the things that I wanted to convey to you is how different it's going to look. Um, for us, it's kind of you, you look at a set of plans and you kind of visualize it, but it's, and I know from my own family, when I, when they see what I'm working on and they have no idea what it's going to look like. Uh, that's why I wanted to put that in front of you. Just so that we, uh, we have a considerable amount of time before any of this sort of becomes relevant. But I'm, 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 I want you to remember in the next year and the year after, those properties, the ones that I indicated. Um, I'm afraid, you know, you know, they, they're going to be the first house in from, from the sidewalk. Um, and it's going to be a lot closer than I think people have visualized to their, to their property line. So anyway, just put it out there. As, as uh, Rachel said, we have lots of time. Um, next year, we're doing water main. The year after, DOT is building the road. Uh, in between, there's going to be demolition of the properties. And then the electric line that is currently right along the edge of the of Port Washington Road is going to go to the back line by we energy. So there's going to be lots of activity and every time somebody comes out there, there's going to be less vegetation. So heads up.
Alderman Doherty.
I agree with your recommendation. I think it, you know, people move to places. They don't necessarily plan on these things happening. You're stuck there. You live there and you're stuck with it. So I think anything we can do on this front makes sense to me. Thanks for your recommendation.
Thank you. One, uh, one other question uh, for those residents, if we would opt to suggest or, you know, move forward with that uh, the spruce or, you know, the tree wall, um, are they okay with that?
Well, so this is, I guess, the day that we put this on everyone's radar. Um, and that's how um, we start the discussion. Uh, I think that uh, the residents do deserve to sort of have a heads up on uh, what it's going to end up looking. Um, you know, the essentially the sidewalk is going to be at the back patio of existing homes that are on the, on the road right now. Um, so my guess is that if I live there, I mean, I would want a bunch of trees and then a fence. Just because I think I'm editorializing now, but the, the ten homes that were on Port Washington Road were always on Port Washington Road. People, folks there knew what they were getting into. These second homes on all the cross streets, they were never on Port Washington Road. So I think that um, this is a reasonable start to address that issue.
Thank you. Alderman Gelhard.
Just to respond to Aldering and Wheezy's um, question, that, the residents at this rather contentious meeting back in August made a specific request that landscaping be provided. So just so you know.
Sure. The trees get a little large and maybe all of a sudden, oh, geez, I didn't know it was going to get into my yard that far. I mean, I've got a neighbor that planted some uh, cedar trees and now they were real easy to work around and now they're intruding into my yard quite a bit. And you know, now it's starting to be trim time on them. So.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
One question.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Schlesinger, go ahead.
So ju- just so I'm making sure I'm hearing this. So really what we're asking is to have the fence and the trees. That's, that's what is being recommended.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I think that, that makes sense. These uh, we are Glendale and having a a long fence line without trees, I think just would be counterintuitive to what we'd like in that um, highly trafficked road. So thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Alright, I'll go and call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oced. Motion carries. And our last item of new business is just a review of the city's snow removal and salting policy. Ms. Ashram.
Yes, uh, this is an annual review prior to uh, the snow season coming before us. Uh, we also did a, a review after the last snow season uh, in March, uh, asking if there were any recommended changes. There were no uh, recommended changes. Uh, we had a really good year with brine a- and utilizing that. We've now uh, started construction on the new brine truck to have a second one. Uh, not certain exactly when that'll be complete. Charlie may have more information on that and he'll be coming up. Uh, but overall, just uh, an overview and reminder of what the policy is uh, for everyone to be aware as we head into our favorite season.
Evening, Charlie.
Evening. Uh, the second brine truck will probably not be online this year. Unfortunately, due to the supply chain issue that we're all familiar with, we still don't have parts for it. So we already actually had the first run of the unit we used last year, this year successfully. So we will do what we can to again, maintain the level of service that we provided last year.
Alright, this is just reminding us of the policy. So um, making sure that's in the public realm again. Anybody have any questions? Alderwoman Shaw.
I know it's not regarding our stuff, but if I remember correctly, the county does Green Bay Avenue. Are they also doing brine?
Talking about the county north, Good Hope.
Uh, between, I'm going to say.
Microphone.
I'm not in it. There we go.
There we go.
Alright.
I'm going to say between uh, Silver Spring and Good Hope.
That's maintained by Glendale.
It is, yes. Okay, then that answered my question.
As you do, Brian, it correct.
I know. Okay, I just, I, like I said, it answers my question because uh, from the newsletter, we love our lines.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, thank you. Yep. Alright, next is commission committee and board reports. We'll start with uh, start with the city administrator this time.
Oh, alright. Um, city hall be closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving holiday. Um, I will be out of the office on Wednesday, um, having tiny house Thanksgiving. So new executive director for Welcome to Glendale, uh, Mayor and I made an offer uh, to Becca Garrison. She uh, is currently working for her, the Bavarian Beer House, uh, applied for the position, uh, went through an interview process with us uh, with another applicant and uh, came out on top. She will be starting uh, December sixth. Uh, twenty-three hundred West Rose Shell Avenue, uh, just down the street from me had a fire in June of twenty-twenty-one uh, with no uh, foreseeable reconstruction of it. Uh, building inspection uh, did issue a razor repair order. That's a thirty-day order. Uh, usually gets them going in one direction or another. And so should have another update on that uh, in the next month or so.
At all?
That, oh, and um, for, for the public, uh, you all are aware. Uh, but for the public, I have given my uh, notice of resignation. I, uh, my last day will be January ten of twenty-twenty-two, I will be um, Director of Administrative Services for the Village of Bayside. So not leaving the North Shore and staying in my house, my tiny house.
And, and so I'll go next with my report. Um, as you all know, and it certainly was put in the newspaper, I did offer to the Village of Brown Deer to be their interim manager, um, when they were going through a search largely because I wanted to help out a friend, President Montgomery, as they were going through uh, a significant amount of, of staff changes. Um, I've had a number of people ask me if it was my intention to put my name in for the city administrator position in the city of Glendale. I want you all to know that I am not. I will not be resigning as mayor. I will be helping you all through this whole process. Uh, I believe that my services to the city um, are better in this chair than in that chair. So um, it, it's a, wanted to dispel any rumors that people may have heard that, you know, that though the mayor is going to resign and apply for the position. I am not. Five years ago, I helped lead this council through a search and I will lead this council to, council through another search. So uh, wanted to make that very clear and make sure you all know and also make sure it's in a public meeting. So um, so that is my report. I don't have any other committees or anything to report on right now. And I will start then with Alderwoman Shaw this time.
I knew you were going to do that.
Yes.
The um, I know the North Shore Library Board met last Thursday. I did not attend, but I'll let um, either one of my counter peoples who attended do that. And then also in, and if you want to call an emergency meeting, the North Shore Library Board met before our council meeting and approved an expenditure for renderings to help along with the um, promoting of this um, North Shore Library, how they want to do it. And since the last meeting, that would be everything. So and then as a reminder, you all have a great Thanksgiving. Have a wonderful Christmas and a wonderful New Year's and I will see you next year.
Alright, thank you. Alderman Schlesling.
Hello, uh, we had our first Fourth of July committee meeting and we did a, a good retrospective on the prior year. Look to head to the next year. We do plan on making some um, minor changes to try to get back to normal and maybe make things a little bit better. Um, our next meeting is going to be in January. We're skipping the December meeting because it would have fallen right around the holidays. Um, we are of course, always looking for volunteers and others to step up and to assist on the things that need to make this successful. So just wanted to continue to ask for uh, everyone to shout out to people who like to have a good time and uh, and plan a party to join our committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wheezy.
Thank you. Uh, the architectural review board will not meet this month because uh, for lack of agenda items. Uh, and then to address the library board, uh, last week, Thursday, uh, we had a scheduled meeting and quorum was not reached. Uh, but uh, in the following ad hoc discussion, some information was shared that uh, Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, there's uh, the TIF discussion with Bayside is going to first come in front of their board on December two, correct?
But no, they've already had their public hearing on their uh, tax incremental financing request, uh, which was last week. And it is up for approval by their village board on December first.
So it, alright, so it will be approved in, oops, sorry, in December. Uh, and for all intents and purposes, the fundraising hasn't started yet for the library. They've got some uh, people that show an interest, but it's a, if, if, is everybody on board, then they'll get on board kind of thing for the communities. This evening with the uh, approval of um, expenditure from uh, by the library board uh, for the architect to create the renderings that will be used for fundraising. And I know how valuable those are from my own personal experience with the park. Uh, however, the timeline on those, uh, I'm a little bit concerned about that because they're showing the you know, it's going to be one to two weeks for visioning and program verification. Now that could be shortened up, you know, a little bit. But then they're also showing concept design of six to eight weeks to come, you know. So to me, that is the development of the renderings. So if that, even if that can be shortened up by several weeks, we're right up against our deadline. So that does give me concern. Uh, it's something that we will need to uh, monitor closely.
Thank you. Alderman Gelhard.
Nothing to report this evening, Ms. Ware.
Alderman Doherty. Report tonight. Alderwoman Vukovich.
I notes, I reject Rachel's uh, resignation. Just wanted to let you know. I do not have any power on that, but I have expressed that to her often. I would like to give a big thank you to Mayor Kennedy for um, clearing up his, his uh, decision not to be the city administrator. So I can stop.
Or not to be a candidate.
A candidate.
Yes.
So I can stop hearing about, are you going to be the next mayor of Glendale? I don't have time. So thank you all very much. And um, also thank you. I got a couple of uh, I would like everyone to respect now that I am a half a century old. So I am more wise than anything that I have had in the last forty-nine years. All just because I turned fifty.
Explain some things.
I love this council so much.
Yep.
Years older than my oldest child.
Alright, the common council is noticed to convene in closed session. It is for purposes of discussing city administrator recruitment as well as non-represented employee evaluations. Um, we We will be voting after our closed session on wage scale for twenty twenty-two. So that we aren't, if there's anyone wanting to attend when we vote, when we come back out of closed session, just know that there will be things for us to vote on. Has to do with the, the wages for the upcoming year, so. This point, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Alloved.
Move Alderman Shaws or second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Doherty, all those in favor of convening in closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one sub C, please say aye.
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 Opposed, no. We are now in closed session, I will give staff a moment to put folks in the waiting room as well as close the door. I should. He knows Australian, he knows how it works. All right.
Obviously, I don't.
I just say.
Vacation girl.
Our, our ability to do closed session these last couple of years, starting with while we were in the park, trying to do closed sessions. And even now, I'm glad you got the microphone fixed so that we can do this, so, all right, so we have now reconvened in open session. While we were in closed session, we did get a number of updates from the city administrator on staff, unrepresented staff evaluations. As well as the. The proposal for an increase for unrepresented staff. So we've got three items, the first one I'm going to just, is not a motion. But while we were in closed session, we did also discuss a potential process for city administrator recruitment. And so we are directing the current city administrator to collect resumes from any internal candidates as well as from. Temporary interim candidates that would be provided by the two search firms that already responded to our request. And then also to have those two search firms be prepared to do presentations on the permanent recruitment process. So, so that doesn't require a motion, that's just directing the city administrator to collect resumes and, and have people ready for our next meeting.
It will be done.
Okay, and it'll be on the December sixth agenda.
Correct.
All right, we do have two items though that will require motions. The first is a motion to provide a payout of nineteen days of unused leave to the deputy city administrator. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Move Alderman Vukovich, second of Alderman Doherty, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then the next item is the police contract was resolved a couple of months ago, we signed that agreement, the collective bargaining agreement. The three percent pay increase was negotiated, so in fairness to the rest of the staff, the city administrators proposed a three percent increase for all the unrepresented staff. And has also presented to us the placement of each of them on, on the compensation schedule for next year. So can I have a motion to increase the pay for the unrepresented, nonrepresented by three percent? And to approve the twenty twenty-two proposed compensation schedule as presented by the city administrator?
Alloved.
Move Alderman Wheezy, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Schmelzling, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. And I think that is everything on our agenda, any announcements or anything?
No, oh, December sixth, not December thirteen, December sixth is the next council meeting.
Yes, in December because of the holidays, we're meeting on December, the first Monday. And if we have to have a meeting, a second meeting, it would be on the third Monday in December, so we don't hit up against the holidays. So the sixth and potentially the twentieth. All right, I would now entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, move Alderman Doherty, second of Alderman Gelhard, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We stand adjourned anyway. Enjoy yourself.
Thanks for coming in, everybody.
It's all right.
Not for real.
She said it.
You said it.
So that's for real.